We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Parton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gore. Vice Mayor Gore, can you hear us? Vice Mayor Gore?
Still showing her muted.
I'm here, but I didn't hear anything from y'all. So are you calling me for something?
This is just attendance.
Okay, you had to unmute yourself so we can hear you.
We're unmuted.
You were, I couldn't, we didn't hear you speaking.
Okay.
Um, so here.
Okay, Counselor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris? Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Pelham?
Here.
Counselor Holloway? You have a call.
All right. Um, at this time, do we have a motion to allow Counselors Pelham and Vice Mayor Gore into closed session?
So moved.
Or, excuse me, to participate remotely?
So moved.
All right, uh, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Vice, or excuse me, um, Counselor Joyner. At this time, Vice Mayor Gore, can you state why you are requesting to participate remotely?
Yeah, sure, um, I'm out of the city on a work, mandatory work trip, um, so I can't be here presently in person.
Okay, can you state where you're conducting the meeting from?
Uh, Staughton, Virginia.
Okay, uh, same thing for you, Ms. Pelham?
Yes, um, I'm at my home residence in Ward 6, and, uh, uh...
Medical?
Medical, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, is there a motion to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel matters, including board and commission appointments, the assignment and performance of specific employees and employees of City Council, and Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A30, discussion offers and, uh, discussion of the terms or scope of such contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and to the extent such discussion will be aided thereby? Okay, uh, motion's been made by Counselor Denton, I'll second it. Is there any further discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. About a closed meeting?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway, seconded by Counselor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore? Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, uh, first item of business is to appoint... Yeah, these are actions coming out of closed session. Uh, first is to appoint Jasmine Gore as the interim member of the Planning Commission. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselor Denton, seconded by Counselor Harris. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gore? Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, uh, is there a motion to direct the city manager to restrict all P cards to directors until further notice?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Holloway, seconded by Counselor Harris.
Repeat that motion?
Yeah, restrict the P cards to directors only until...
Oh, okay, directors only, okay.
All right, is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
But... Counselor Denton?
Yes.
May, uh, Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, is there a motion to, uh, direct the city manager to put the HR policy on the next regular meeting agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
All right, is there a mo- uh, motion to, uh, put the revised P card and reconciliation policies on the finance, next finance committee meeting for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Joyner. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, is there a motion to direct the city manager to put out an RFP for a forensic audit of all P cards, gas cards, and open credit lines from 2019 to present for past and present, uh, city employees?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Holloway and seconded by Counselor Joyner. Is there any discussion?
Does that include City Council as well?
We don't have P cards.
Just, well, credit cards, okay.
Yeah, we don't, yeah, we don't have any.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, uh, seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
No.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
Okay, uh, certification, please.
Certification pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2 dash, I'm sorry, 2.2-3712D, where only public business matters, one, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and two, identified in closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting. Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Counselor Pelham?
Counselor Pelham?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, um, we are going to postpone, uh, tonight's work session item to the November meeting. Uh, we're going to move directly into our regular meeting agenda, uh, Counselor Holloway.
With this, with us putting that policy, uh, in, on the next agenda, that's nothing that requires a second reading or anything of that nature, is it?
No.
Okay, great.
All right. We're going to call the regular meeting to order. Uh, I want to thank all the citizens for coming out to tonight's City Council meeting. Uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Parton?
Yes, or, excuse me, here.
Vice Mayor Gore? Counselor Joyner?
Here.
Counselor Harris?
Here.
Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Pelham?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
Here.
You have a call.
Okay. Okay. Um... At this time, we're going to, uh, do our prayer. Um, I don't believe Pastor Hart's in the audience, uh, so, um, Counselor Holloway said that he would do it, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Oh, okay. All right, uh, Mr. Bennett, would you like to lead us in our opening prayer? All right, please rise.
If, if I could, if we could have a moment of silence for the, uh, for the family of, um, a citizen, uh, who disappeared on Friday morning before we pray, that would be great. Thank you so much. To Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight and we ask for wisdom, and we ask for your presence to be with us as the council does the hard work of leading the city tonight. Lord, give everyone understanding and, uh, give us wisdom as we move forward. We ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, uh, is there a motion to amend the regular meeting agenda to include R2, uh, the adoption of personal property tax relief rate?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Counselor Denton and seconded by Counselor Holloway. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, uh, moving on to the consent agenda, um, I'm going to personally, uh, ask for the, uh, consent agenda to be amended to, uh, remove the minutes. Um, I saw a couple, uh, errors in there, uh, so is there a motion to amend, uh, the consent agenda to remove C1?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion's been made by Counselor Joyner, seconded by Counselor Denton. Is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, uh, moving on to information presentation, uh, Ms. Ness from the Robert Bob group.
All right, how do I make it serve as a reminder? All right. Hello. So today's presentation is meant to be the final end cap for our work that started last August. So the presentation today is going to serve as the final update for our contract. We're going to go through what our original engagement objectives were. Is that me? Right, our original engagement objectives were our current project status, the key accomplishments we've had in the last year, plus, um, continuing areas of concern that the city needs to watch, um, some open items that are left over, as well as how to monitor for fiscal stability moving forward. Our aim is to ensure a stable financial future as this engagement concludes, and that is what, and where we are coming from as we move through this presentation. And we're going to start with the original engagement objectives. This should look very familiar with everyone. Uh, we were, uh, the last audit was an unmodi- unmodified opinion for the city of Hope Well was actually fiscal year 2014. Uh, the last annual comprehensive financial report and federal single audit was issued in 2019. Just to recoup, uh, in 2019, there was actually no opinion officially issued. Uh, that actually happened about this time last year, um, in which point the audit of public accounts was unable to evaluate the financial vitality of the city. Alvarez was originally called in, and then after that, we, um, proceeded to have two goals. Uh, objective one was that was the addressing the urgent financial distress. Sorry, I keep hitting the wrong button. Um, and that was to establish the fiscal PMO. To be clear, that was only supposed to be four months, and then I was supposed to disappear, but here we are, uh, a year and a quarter later, and now I'm going to disappear. So, uh, it needed a little bit more than was originally, um, modified in the original statement of work. Uh, the job of the fiscal PMO was to plan, monitoring, and transition activities, um, work on accountability reporting, reconcile the general ledger, the financial policies and procedures, and to manage the obligations for wastewater. There were some key deliverables that are also identified here, including the fact that we have actually issued, for those of you who are reading our 60-plus page, um, Word, uh, 60-plus page weekly reports. We've issued 58 of them. I have now sat here in front of you 10 times. Uh, we've implemented pooled cash, bank reconciliation ma- bank reconciliation manager, um, employee expense reimbursement, although we'll cover pieces of that a little bit later, um, advised on segregation of duties, long-term and short-term workflow adjustments within the city. Uh, we've collaborated, um, probably more than Dr. Manker would want with Dr. Manker and, uh, as the city manager to oversee the development of this transition plan. Uh, we've delivered 22 SOP Word documents and additional 22 SOP Visioflow charts, 24 and counting training sessions, and I say and counting because Christie's sitting here to my right to deliver the final training sessions over the next three days. Um, we have performed reconciliations, and we've developed a true-up process for the industries. To refresh your memory there, I believe the last reconciliation prior to coming on-site was 2017, so that was quite a bit of industry reconciliation work that has been done. Uh, we've met, uh, also with Duberry and pushed that along and, um, moved to incorporate those findings, as well as the staffing finding, um, with the industry partners moving forward. Objective two was the accounting remediation services. This was the part where we worked through, um, every single detail of the backlog of reconciliations, and those cash reconciliations into, again, to refresh your memory, that went from bank, uh, statements on up have been completed through fiscal year 2024. Uh, we've issued new financial statements, and those have been submitted to the external auditors through 2023. Again, 2024 won't be submitted until they get the balance, the year-end balance of 2023. We have completed the financial statements through 2024, but they are not final until then, and we have also developed a concert comprehensive ERP work plan to address that moving forward. Uh, we have also done the monthly fund reconciliations, and those have been completed through fiscal year 24, and we've optimized technology as part of that, and that includes, um, the ACFR implementation, uh, which is ready to go and will be used as far, um, used in December of this year, um, and then reigniting the discussion regarding Socrotta reporting. That is, one of the items we'll talk about is items to be continued that will be continued, um, to be implemented by the city, uh, moving forward. As part of our delivery process, um, other than, of course, the status reporting and the city council presentations, we've also addressed, uh, 44 issues, and we've resolved 14 of the past audit findings. We have also mitigated 18 key risks, putting the city towards a path towards stronger financial integrity. Now I'm going to move through our current process. This is what we're, I normally present on, which is what our current project status is. For audit remediation, uh, for Robinson, Farmer, and Cox, we have been working closely with them. Our understanding is that they are getting very close to issuing an opinion that will be favorable. Our als- our understanding is also that all outstanding queries have been addressed and answered by either us or the city. For reconciliations, um, we've completed, completed the city's bank and fixed asset reconciliations for fiscal '21 through fiscal '24 estimates pending auditor review. So again, '20 has gone in for the audit. Then what happens is, is once they opine on '20, we then refresh '21. When they opine on '21, we then refresh for '22. So in guess, in that particular situation, while the PMO is now closing down, of course, Jack and his team will still be actively there to respond to all of the auditor questions as they go through and to refresh those, um, prior-year balances to finalize for the current year that is under audit. So they will still be available for that. Additionally, regarding the ERP, cash balances for pooled cash are also posted and reviewed, um, further strengthening the city's financial health. This is just everything graphically that I just said. Um, it shows where we are for the audit reconciliation status. Um, what is new here is this piece here on schools. Uh, '20 has also been submitted for schools. Uh, '21 was submitted last week. '22 and '23 are under final review prior to submission, and '24 estimates, um, have been complete as well for the school accounts, school payroll, and school cafe prepay. Our priority is to identify and resolve any discrepancies that are found from this point forward quickly to maintain clear and accurate financial records across the board. Now to go through where we are on the systems work, um, again, pooled cash and bank reconciliation manager are pretty much put to bed, so we're going to move forward with the items that were open. Um, the employee expense module, we had previously reported that it was going to be in use on the 17th. However, that has been delayed to October 31st. Just to refresh everyone's memory, it was supposed to go October 1, then we decided the 17th for a phased rollout. Uh, to be clear, what is happening right now is that employees are entering their expenses in the new employee expense model. Module, excuse me. However, due to some city, uh, wide communications and other issues, the October 17th payroll reimbursement was missed, and so those items will now be put in the October 31st. So the first, first official test of the production live will be for the October 31st payrun. When I checked yesterday, there have been two expense reports put in, one that was last week and one that was this week. I'm not sure what else will happen before the, um, everything goes live on the 31st. Regarding the annual comprehensive financial report, everything has been put up in the system. There was training that was provided October 2nd, and system access was set up and confirmed. However, there are going to be additional trainings and a follow-up session with Tyler in December, um, so that when it is time to, um, work through and use that financial model, it is fresh and it will be used starting in December. So again, this is kind of like employee expense reimbursement. It's in place, but it is not quite being used. In this particular situation, it is that we wanted one more set of Tyler trainings to make sure everyone was set up correctly, um, and everyone fully understood what they had to do. This, of course, the annual consolidated financial reports are the reports that get automated through the system and delivered to your external financial statement auditors. The last two here, um, are the long-term security and workflow updates. Again, to refresh your memory, we had short-term security and workflow updates that were put into production over the summer. The security updates were actually backed out. We talked about that last time I was here. So those have to be re-implemented, and then you have to get to your long-term security and, and workflow updates. Our team has made our recommendations. There are also departmental meetings for security updates. Those were concluded, um, and the city, along with RBG, our team is updating the security roles in the test environment currently to be con- to be finished shortly. What the city has to do is to test those updates prior to December, putting them live. It is crucial to addressing the audit risks and strengthening our internal controls. If you recall, we had really hoped that these were going to be in by July 1. The reason why is we would really would have liked for the system to be your audit system of record for Robinson, Farmer, Cox, or whoever does your fiscal year '25 statement. If these controls were to be in place for greater than 50% of the year, they could rely on the system. So that December date is really key. Um, whatever limits their manual procedures is what is going to make the audit more efficient, more effective, more reliable, remove your material weaknesses. I can continue to go on and on here. There is an entire section on maintaining sustainable momentum here, but this is one I really want to call attention to right now. I'll hit it again, tell them once, tell them twice. This is one of those things that really has to be done, because without these segregation of duties in place, without the appropriate workflows in place, you're seeing duplicate entries, you're seeing people with access to things that shouldn't have access. So while we have manually cleaned up the financial statements through '24, starting July 1 of this year, we haven't manually done anything. We are completely reliant on the system, and what I'm telling you is until this is done, this system is unreliable. So I just want to be really clear there, and we'll cover this in the next section, too, but this, I want to say that first here. Um, in terms of the bank reconciliation manager, bank reconciliation is active. The reconciliations are now complete for July '24, and August '24 reconciliations are underway. Um, complete reconciliations by Tuesday, November 19th, and present results for the November Finance Committee meeting. Again, I'm going to leave you with some things that you guys should watch as you move through this, and that is your first trigger. Again, I'll summarize these at the end, but please make sure that the next reconciliations that are done by bank reconciliation manager don't drop, and that they are complete by your November Finance Committee meeting, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. This, again, is just a visual summary of everything I just went through. In the interest of time, I'm just going to continue to move. Here's where we are on SOPs in training. Everything has been documented. The virtual SOPs in training have been completed by everything on the left. On-site training has been completed by everything in the middle, and documentation has been completed for everything. That being said, when you look at the status report that we just sent over today, that will be, I think it goes live on Friday on the website. There are a couple of items that have to be updated post-training that Christie and her team are working on that will be delivered to the city by the end of the week.
Um, the ones from last week leave at the end, the speedings from training this week will be delivered by the 31st.
All right, when last we, um, left off, we talked about the, um, agreement for the Hopewell Wastewater Commission. It was under review, and it's been in this redline process since July, and, uh, Advancex is sort of managing that process. Um, I did speak with them finally last week, because I wanted to make sure this was put to bed before we got out. Um, what is happening is with every update that gets made by our Hopewell wastewater treatment plant, there is an industry partner that is putting new caveats into the agreement. And every time there is new material put into the agreement, it kind of goes back through the review process. So this is what is triggering this current review. Uh, what happened, uh, at the Finance Committee meeting, which I believe was last week, is that there was a $2.1 million, um, for lack of a better word, we're going to call it, bill that was reconciled and sent back out to the industry partners to close up fiscal year '24 that was not in their original forecast, and that gave the industry partners pause. Um, we have spoken to the industry partners about it, explained why it's there, but there needs to be a change to the way that Hopewell Waste, when, when we talked to the wastewater treatment plant about it, they said, "Well, that's the way you've done it in prior years." And I said, "No further, you cannot surprise the industry partners with that. You have to at least give a forecast of what your estimates are." Because, you know, I'm through the end of the year, because it is, the industry partners need to understand and know what they're going to be, um, allocated and what they're going to have to pay in year after year, because they then go back to their leadership and request that dollar value to pay the city. And it doesn't look good for them if they're going back once or twice, or three times in this particular case. So we need to make sure that we're keeping clear, open, and transparent communication with our industry partners and giving accurate, um, estimates and forecasts, and we're not surprising them. I think one of the things that really irritated them during the Finance Committee meeting is that that was the first time that they heard about the additional $2.1 million. They hadn't yet been notified, um, but it was going public here to the Finance Committee meeting, um, and it was for fiscal year '24. So that's going to trigger changes to the agreement, and so that redline version is now going back through. Russ is still continuing to manage that ad hoc, and he will do so through December to make sure that gets through. Um, but again, it's something to keep a lot, keep an, um, keep an eye on. Next, the transition plan. I believe at the last Hopewell City Council meeting, Dr. Manker... I believe at the last Hopewell City Council meeting, Dr. Manker presented the transition plan for each financial department to City Council. The plan outlined responsibilities for critical functions, employee training, SOP updates, managing audit issues to ensure continuity. The current challenge that we, that the city is going to have is while the transition plan has been presented to City Council, we still need to maintain status tracking of its implementation across departments, and currently, we're still here, that's not in place. So we want to make sure that moving out, that this is being tracked and that there's a smooth transfer of responsibilities and continuing operations. Just yesterday in our status meeting with Dr. Manker, we talked about a strategy for SOPs regarding who's going to be responsible for reviews and who's going to manage the overall process. The city needs to annually review all SOPs, even if there's no changes, recertify them, reach back out to the departments that are impacted. I do feel comfortable with what Dr. Manker presented yesterday as part of that strategy, but again, we won't be here when it gets implemented. This is one of the reasons we wanted to have this done in July, so that we can monitor the implementation and feel good when we stepped out. But now we are just getting to this point, and we are leaving on the thirty-first. So it is something for us to move forward with as a city. Just make sure that that tracking system is implemented and that there's progress across all departments and that everyone is held accountable. All right. Now we get to the fun part, which is the key accomplishments, which is quite a bit in the last year and a quarter. For project planning, we've made significant strides, personnel assessments, financial processes improvements, from delivering detailed ERP work plans to onboarding a new CFO and finalizing key financial documentation and training. These efforts are setting a strong foundation for the city's long-term financial health. Additionally, we have implemented a fraud risk matrix, provided essential recommendations to tighten internal controls, and ensure greater transparency and accountability. I will say, actually, I'm going to even change my wording, to help ensure greater transparency and accountability. You can lead the horse to water, but you can't make the water drink. Can't make the horse drink. Excuse me. My bad. I'm very tired, and we have a long presentation in there. But all that to say, we can set up infrastructure for the city. We can leave you with good standard operating procedures. We can leave you with fully trained employees. We can even leave you with recommendations and new implemented pooled cash models and bank reconciliation managers, and we can get you up to date with your fiscal year twenty-four. I am fairly confident that your opinions from now through fiscal year twenty-four are going to be okay. But then you get to the tough stuff, and the tough stuff is clearing those material weaknesses, which is what all this work has meant to do. If you don't sustain the work that we put in place, moving forward through fiscal year twenty-five, onto fiscal year twenty-six, et cetera, you are going to start slipping again. So making sure that people are held accountable, making sure that those SOPs and trainings are reviewed, employees need to be retrained every year, new employees coming on board need to be trained, communication between departments needs to continue, and I'm not just talking about the departments that run under Dr. Manker, I'm also talking about core treasury areas that are also constitutional offices. Everyone has to be to the same drumbeat and keeping their eye. I mean, we instituted something where we're looking at daily bank statements. How much does, how much money does the city currently have in the bank? What are you doing with it? Every day, we have been looking at that. You need to continue to do that so that you can continue to pay everything on time. Additional accomplishments, conducting a fit gap assessment of your ERP system, reviewing the Tyler Technologies contract for clarity. We established fiscal benchmarks and initiated the five-year budget forecast model, created delinquent collection procedures for the revenue processes and responsibilities between finance and the treasurer's office were clarified. If I could again refresh your memory, on day one, we brought the constitutional offices and city leadership into a room to say, "Okay, tell us how things move through the city." Crickets. No one could tell us where the money comes in and where the money goes out. And I am confident that right now everyone understands how the money is moving through the city, furthermore, how the money is controlled through the city. But again, we can only set up those policies. We have been the watchdogs and the reminders, and did you do this, did you do that, et cetera, et cetera, and we will continue to do that through October thirty-first, but once we step out, the city is going to have to do that on their own. In order to try to assist the city in moving forward, we have now worked with the CFO to initiate a five, sorry, this is a bug, a five-year budget forecast model so that you can work on long-term financial planning. I know that Stacy is coming back to you with recommendations for what can go back into surplus accounts and those kinds of things as part of your Finance Committee meeting, which by the way, is now attended, and all council is on it for our recommendation, which we feel really good about. We've initiated actual tax collections against budgeted figures to ensure spending adjustments, incorporated delinquent collection procedures, and revenue-related standard operating procedures for the city, and also established that MOA for the treasurer. I know I saw three more MOAs come across yesterday. So that, that ability to do that, that process that is set up so that, you know, just again, an MOA is basically saying, Department A, this is how we're communicating with Department B. It's especially effective when you've got a constitutional office versus a city department, so everyone knows who's on first. We've also made significant progress in financial reconciliations, completing reconciliation on city accounts from fiscal year 2020 through fiscal year 23, including public schools. Actually, that should say fiscal year 24, including public schools. Again, bank statements on up, we rely not at all on the system. So everything was rebuilt. So you have brand-new rebuilt financial statements that will eventually be entered into the MUNIS system at, once the fiscal year twenty-four audit has been applied on, and your control environment, assuming you make those recommendations that we take for segregation duties and work plan, should be relatively controlled within your system. We have and will continue to provide continued support for RFC or whoever your external audit is. I'm very hopeful that in the next couple of weeks, we will find a final opinion on the 2020 audit. We've also developed cash flow forecasts for the Hopewell Water Renewal. We just talked about those and the slight gap that has to be closed there regarding forecasting for estimates, and then also consolidated financial accounts, enabling those transitions for future financial periods. Finally, we updated the chart of accounts, ensuring accurate utilization by mapping the appropriate GL accounts to correct physical bank accounts. To refresh your memory, that had to be done as part of the pooled cash implementation in MUNIS. Key milestones have been reached in optimizing the city's ERP system by reassessing security protocols, implementing critical modules, contract management, bid management, bank reconciliation manager, and now employee expense reimbursement. And we've also, of course, set up the annual consolidated financial report module as well. They've improved financial oversight reporting while implementation of the pooled cash fund has streamlined cash management. Also, you, US City Council or the city as itself should be able to tell at any given day how much money you've got in your bank and what that money is allocated to. If you recall, when we first came in, we could say, "Hey, there's $5 million in the bank," but no one knew at that time what that $5 million had been set aside for, if anything. So where the city started to lose ground and footing is when there was money that was spent for the Hopewell Wastewater Treatment Plant that had not been budgeted for, that was still being spent, and there were other items that had been allocated for that money, and so that's when things started to slip. We also led the creation of the milestone calendar so that the ERP administrator can move to more proactive planning, so that they understand at every given month and mile what actually should be done. So we've set up, for this month, there should be this, for this month, there should be this, and we've set that up all the way through the remainder of the ERP modules that have to be done. We've held, I would say, multiple weekly meetings, the ERP administration, to make sure that they're staying on that schedule. There have been many times where those have slipped, where we have had to get that back on track. The ERP, employee expense reimbursement is actually the most recent example, where we have spent a good financial, a good amount of time this week, Adriana and her team, making sure that everything is now reset for that October thirty-first date alongside the IT team as well as your CFO. Last slide here is the industry engagement. We had to work very closely with the industry partners to make sure that that true-up process was finalized, that everyone knew where they were. We also had to do quite a bit, I want to give the industry partners some credit for compromising with the city as we moved through that process. I think everyone sort of played nice in that sandbox as we moved through that financial transparency and long-term financial sustainability process. Again, nothing had been done since 2017 because you didn't have an opinion on the audit from 2017 in a way the original wastewater commission was met. No reconciliations were to be done until the audit was complete, so the city never did the audits. So you had quite a few years, seven to be exact, to catch up on, and the industry partners were good partners with the city in working through that. Last piece of this is the Duber report. There's also a staffing report that was done by the city. We did get involved with the Duber report. The industry partners were not included in the original work. It was one thirty-minute call, and the reality is if the Duber report is going to, between that and the staffing study, going to inform future expenditures regarding the wastewater treatment plant, and the industry partners are four of the five parties funding those future implementations or improvements, they need to have a say in how, in what that report is touching. So we worked with the industry partners to make sure that that was done. So we actually took a pause, we went back with Duber, we had additional meetings with the industry partners in Duber. Everyone was briefed on the final report. I think one of the things that, I'm going to speak a little out of turn here, frustrates Bob and myself, is that we don't really have a lot of evidence that the staffing and the Duber capital improvement plan reports, that we think were both really good works, have been fully incorporated in the plans for the Hopewell Wastewater Treatment Plan moving forward. I think there is, there is still multiple spreadsheets, they're not singing off one sheet of music, and I do think that those items need to be finalized and tied up with a bow, and I think there was some momentum that was lost with the transition over from the old director to the new director, and that probably should be followed up on. And that is a nice place to lead me into areas of concern. So we've been talking our status reports around these eight-hundred-plus prior to six-thirty, so, you know, basically the beginning of fiscal year twenty-five back, dating back as far as seven, one-twenty-one, that were unreconciled. We did work with Stacy and have some discussions regarding that with the external auditors, and basically at this point, the only items that have to be urgently reconciled are those for July 2024 forward, so anything that would affect the fiscal year twenty-five audit. While the other things are outstanding, they will just be left off because all of the audit reports that were submitted to the financial auditors were manual. So we're not really relying on the system. Eventually, it does need to be cleaned up, but for fiscal year twenty-five, the ones that are urgent to be cleaned up are the ones for fiscal, for January 2024 on forward. Again, we've talked about the security and workflow delays and backouts. That is one of the biggest things I would identify as your risk to financial accuracy due to the continuing delays there. We have spoke in council meetings of the past regarding lack of staffing in your IT department with the one ERP administrator and the backup being the IT director himself. There's a lot on their plates, and there are a lot of updates that need to be done. I will plead one more time for you to please consider in the budget for adding an additional headcount there. The next piece here is the cash reserve crisis. We are coming out of a cash reserve crisis. When I was speaking to you in October, I think we had about, we actually, I think we had bounced five checks, and we had on, this time last year, $2 million in the bank. We are in quite a better position as we move through this time of year because everyone, we've taken some money out of our reserves, we've also been smarter about how we're spending money and gotten better visibility around things. But let's be clear, the $10 million or so dollars that you've got in the bank right now is not enough for a rainy day. If something catastrophic happens with the Hopewell Wastewater Treatment Plant, right now, you're not in a position to manage through that if there's another COVID. You're not in a position to manage through that in the short term until you've got federal funds. So, you know, continuing to build that cash reserve, I think, is going to be very important. The last, the second, or last piece on this is we've talked about the Hopewell Public Schools ERP implementation. We've provided you with some ways to oversee that. Keep an eye on that because that could adversely also affect the financials. So as we're moving through and we've cleaned up the city, this is going to be an input, too, and one of the things we've discovered as we've had ongoing conversations with the Hopewell School System, which again, has been very collaborative in working with us, very proactive, very open to some assistance and, and open to feedback. You know, you have to be looking at funds and dollars, and you've got to be talking apples to apples. So everything has to be, you know, if the systems are going to interact, or if the outputs from the MUNIS system in schools are eventually going to be part of your financials, you have to make sure that you've got the same control environment. So keep an eye on that. The last slide here of areas of concern. We do believe that the city still has some wish gaps that have not, we do not believe that the city is in a place right now to take accountability for the turnaround. We are very concerned, even with the transition plan, that moving out without the constant oversight and without that one-to-one clear transition, what we'd like to do is we like to transition, then we like to watch, and we like to be part of the process for three months, and then we like to step out when we know the machine is working. We haven't had that time. So we're still very uneasy regarding those leadership gaps. We also have some departments, not necessarily, some with the city, but also in the constitutional offices that have many unstaffed positions that need to be also handled in order to carry this workload forward. The second piece here, of course, is the indictment of the treasurer and any impact that may have on financial operations. As I said, I saw three MOAs come across yesterday, so I know that the city is dealing with it, but we don't know what we don't know yet, so that's something to keep an eye on. The ERP system optimization, the, a number of the implementation items that we have put in, the modules that we have put in, are not fully utilized for financial management to date. We've put them in, but no one's using them. Employee expense reimbursement, it's in, but it's not going live until the thirty-first. So if there's a problem in that, that run on the thirty-first, you guys are on your own. So just to keep an eye on that, make sure that there's no problems moving forward. The future, the wastewater treatment plant, including, and I spoke to this with Bob and myself, inclusion of the Duber and the staffing reports. Please make sure that key elements are integrated and that there is a full evaluation and action plan. I have not seen since the transition. I asked for it at the very end of the Hopewell Wastewater Director's tenure before there's a transition over. If fully incorporated one sheet of music that the Hopewell Wastewater Treatment Plant is operating off of, with both operational and capital expenditures, as well as a full future, you know, strategic plan per se for the Hopewell Wastewater Treatment Plant, I have not seen that. So keep an eye on that. Make sure you're still holding them accountable to get that. And the last piece here is future, and this is good news, right? Strong economic planning. So it's not just the industry partners and the Hopewell Wastewater Treatment Plan and taxes and, you know, residents of the city that are going to be driving financial and fiscal sustainability moving forward. You have this beautiful parcel of land with a lot of opportunity, and you have not put a lot of focus on economic planning and development moving forward. Now, I know pro bono that Bob and us are going to work with you guys in the state, you know, to identify some of those opportunities, and of course, you're Director of Economic Planning, but please work forward on your future plans for the city. Now that you're in a good spot and will be in a good spot, how are you going to, in the future, have financial success? The answer is taking advantage of some of the assets that you've got that are not currently being used. So work on that, you know, establish future industry partner growth, establish hospitality along the river, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I've covered most of this in my last couple of slides, so I'm going to quickly go through this, but you have the ECFR Statement Builder. Again, it's set up, but training is still happening in December. Please make sure it's fully operational for fiscal year 2025's financial statements towards the end of that year. So Crowder Reporting was put on hold because the city council needs to identify and understand two things. One, the audits have to be complete, right? You've got nothing to post right now because... You've got nothing to post right now because your audits aren't complete. But once the audits are complete and you have numbers that you, you can share with the public, you guys have to make a decision as to whether or not you want to share that with the public, which we would highly recommend, and go ahead and turn on that CRODA reporting tool. Also relating to the system, the long and short-term security and workflow recommendations, we've talked about that ad nauseam, so I'm going to skip through that. The wastewater commission agreement, that is still being re-redlined. That's got to be submitted. Once it's redlined, and it's going to have to go through your legal review, and then back to the industry partners, and then to the commission for signing. So, I do anticipate there'll be some back and forth. They're going to redline it, they're going to give you those, those updates, it's going to have to go to your legal counsel for review. You may counter, there may be some back and forth before it goes to vote. So, keep an eye on that whole process and make sure it comes to completion because that is a hundred percent very important to the sustainability of the city. You cannot let that agreement drop, and it ends in fiscal year twenty-five, so make sure that that goes. The final reconciliations for twenty-four, again, pending completion to align with the upcoming audit. Make sure every audit year, you know, when the audit comes, and I know Stacy's on this, and we'll work with her as she needs to have questions, but let's just make sure when the twenty-twenty audit comes in and that final balance is submitted by the auditors, and again, we've worked with them to make sure everything has been current while we've been here, so if they've come with feedback, we've been updating things. So, make sure that that final balance for fiscal year twenty is the same final balance for fiscal year twenty-one. So, that final balance for twenty should be your start balance for twenty-one, and then your twenty-one should be rolling through. That being said, as we've been having the back and forth, and the reason why this is taking so long, as is the external auditor's purview, when they have adjustments for twenty, we have been making them for twenty-one, we've been carrying forward those rules for twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. So, I don't anticipate a lot of back and forth once the audit opinion for twenty is issued, but those, those balances still need to be updated. There may be some slight adjustments here and there. So, keep an eye on that. Treasure report-
Ms. Ness, before you go any further-
Yeah.
We're getting close to the three-hour rule. So, do I have a motion to extend the meeting until we finish R2?
So, move.
I'll second it. All right, is there any discussion? Seeing no lights, roll call, please.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway? Counselor Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Continue, please.
Okay. Where was I? Treasure report training and desktop procedures. Actually, I did not change it today, I meant to change it. It's no longer in progress, they've been delivered. So, this is the statement of treasurer's accountability. We completed that for the treasurer, it was actually due September thirtieth. What wasn't complete was the treasurer procedures. We then backtracked those procedures with how we did that so that they had those desktop procedures. As you, as a reminder, that was one of the additional amendments that we had to make sure that we did those procedures on top of actually helping them submit the reports. And then the last piece here, which will be expected to end by the end of this month, is the final SOP training. I like to put this in here, yes, we have full plans to complete that by the end of this week. We had some issues, as you guys know, in the last couple of weeks, we've been delivering training with particular departments not showing. I cannot guarantee that folks are going to be there tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday, which is why that's here, potentially still be open. That being said, we will be in contact with Dr. Manker if we have any issues, and we will resolve them together. The last piece here, and these actions and triggers should not look foreign to you because they have been in the transition report, but I wanted to remind you, these are the triggers that, by the way, have not only been put in Dr. Manker's report, but been shared with the Commonwealth, Secretary of Finance. These are the items to take a look at. So, these are the things, that if these things don't happen, all the bells and whistles in council should be going off. So, if you are looking in your role as oversight, please monitor these items, right? Cash accounts reconciled within forty-five days. Actually, it really should be thirty days, but right now, we're at forty-five days, which is a lot better than over a year. So, but at least forty-five days, your goal should be thirty days. Adjust performance indicators to meet new benchmarks for the city manager, and I'm actually going to add in here, and all department lead goals. Adhere to fund reserve policies to ensure financial responsibilities. Just because the money is in there doesn't mean it has to be spent. Monitor budget surplus at the end of the year for future planning. If there is surplus, it should be put into your surplus accounts. Ensure timely debt payments to maintain the city's creditworthiness. Timely payroll and, payroll processing to avoid employee dissatisfaction disruptions. Of course, we never want to be called into a jurisdiction when they can't make payroll, so please monitor that. Implement an action plan for collecting delinquent accounts from the city residents in the business. Again, we came up with a plan, you've got to now implement it. Ensure real estate bills are sent out on time to secure revenue collection. I'm also going to add processed on time as well to that. Work with finance to reconcile accounts every month and complete daily deposits for all revenue streams. For the water renewal, ensure the water treatment bills go out within thirty days. We've had a couple of times, we've seen months and months of delays. Monitor monthly and annual enterprise fund reconciliations to comply with the APA, GAAP, and GFOA standards. Review the current data integrators contract and perform an audit over the last five years with data integrators. We recently found out that data integrators was being paid an additional twenty-four thousand dollars on some handshake deal that was, you know, put in many years ago. And that was part of the, part of the findings that we've recently had, we're working through it with Stacy, but that's another reason to go ahead and do that audit over that contract and make sure you're monitoring it and someone is taking a look at those numbers every month. For human resources, critical positions are filled promptly. I just spoke about the fact that we have a lot of positions that are still not filled. There should be bi-weekly updates on recruiting efforts until those positions are closed. And again, I would like to plug this, including what we're calling ERP Administrator Two and other key positions. For the city manager's office, please hold monthly financial committee meetings with the CFO to track the city's financial progress. Monitor project documentation through Essential Repository, which has now been set up, for updates in status reports on SOPs and corrective actions. Again, we're stepping out now, so we're not going to be the ones doing the status report. Next week will be our last status report. Someone is going to have to continue to monitor the progress on the things that we've been reporting on. For procurement, ensure vendor contracts and payments are timely to maintain service continuity. That is actually something that procurement and finance are excellent at. Oversee contract compliance audits for high-priority vendors. Monitor bids and RFPs for timely delivery. For the commissioner of revenue, implement systems for monitoring, collecting, and addressing delinquent accounts. Timely processing of personal property, business license, and real estate tax bills. Prepare monthly real estate and personal property tax reconciliations with the general ledger. For the IT department, implement and finalize security and workflow updates to mitigate risks and improve efficiency. Track the process of the ERP system, long-term security role updates and short-term, which have to be put in for various departments and personnel. And for grants, timely submission and tracking of financial and grant-related documentation. This is not just financial tracking. There are a number of grants that have performance measures that also have to be included, so heads up on that. Monitor CIFA and APA cardinal reporting for compliance and timely submission. Ensure accurate drawdowns on federal grants and finance, and timely reporting. So, there are a number of grants that not only do you have to monitor financial and actions on those grants, you also have to file by a certain time in order to get that money drawn down. So, keep an eye on all of that. I will say the following. Everything that I have just said is very positive in here, things that are now happening that should continue to happen. But the trigger to you should be monitoring these items, and if these things aren't happening as a city council, all sorts of bells and whistles should go up. So, my advice and guidance to you as I am, as we are moving out of the field, as our BG team is moving out of the field, create some form of dashboard or something like that gets presented by Dr. Manker or someone of the like to city council at least once a month that monitors all those things and reports on them every month so that you guys are kept aware of the progress of all of these items. And so, if something slips, you're aware of it. And with that, Bob has apparently some comments, but for me personally, I'd like to say thank you for allowing us the ability to work with you over the last year and a quarter.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, on behalf of the members of the Robert Bob Group and also our back-office team that you have not seen, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to serve the city of Hopewell. It has been a challenging engagement, but it also has been rewarding. The, I also want to thank, you know, when we put together our team, Heather and I, when we were reviewing the RFP to submit, we gave great consideration to the type of team and that we wanted to bring with us. And I want to thank UHY, our accounting and consulting firm. They're at the top of the food chain in terms of accounting in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, they're an international firm as well, as well as personal legends, our immunists, our immunists experts. These are individuals who grew up in the immunist system, and you would not have, we could not have brought a better team of experts from Adriana, Luna, and her team. And also Christie, who will be with us, be with you for the next few weeks, and Leys, and then Patrick Bob, who's our chief operating officer, but also our risk management, because each one of our engagement comes with significant risks. And we have to manage the risks outside of what you see as we conduct our work and the work that we bring to you. I think it's really important for the city in terms of, to implement the things that we, the strategies that we have put forward. And it's going to require, both on the city administration side, as well as on the city council side, considerable amount of diligence. I mean, I've worked with cities, several cities that are in chapter-nine bankruptcy, and of course, you cannot have a chapter-nine here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. But were you in a chapter-nine, you, you have all of the makings of a municipality that were in chapter-nine. But if you weren't a chapter-nine bankruptcy, the city council would be sitting on the sidelines, and teams like the Robert Bob Group, we would be actually managing your city. And that's a place where you never want to be. And it's good that we don't have a chapter-nine legislation in the city, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, but you're very close in terms of the legislation that was adopted, was passed by the General Assembly last, last session. And you don't want to be in that situation at all. Going forward, one of my recommendations is that, one of the recommendations I'm really proud of is the recommendation wherein the full city council are members of the finance committee. I've only, I'm only know of one other jurisdiction where that occurred, and that's the city of, that's the, I mean, that's the Washington DC where the city council members are the finance committee of the whole. And I think it's really important here is because it brings every member of city council into the conversation with respect to the short and long-term finances of the city. I would also, not to expand on your work at the finance committee, but I think it's important that if, if it doesn't happen at the finance committee, the city council really does need to have a transition committee. I mean, the work that we've done has been, has been transitioned to the city. And the city council are, outside of your, I mean, you have the significant policy responsibility to see that the transition, that team or process that the city manager has placed before you, that that process takes place and that is really implemented because the transition plan has a lot to do with the work that we've done. And so, I would recommend that going forward, that the city council incorporate as part of its finance committee, not that you want to have a separate another meeting, but the transition report and the status of how the city manager is implementing the transition plan. That's the key. And then my final comment is, you really need to expand the office of the Department of Economic Development. I know that there are serious challenges in terms of the things that the city really needs to finance, but if we don't find a way to grow our economy, then we're always going to be scraping at the bottom of the barrel to look for ways in which we, we need to, we can finance those important services that we have. And in every urban city, there, there are significant, there are significant challenges, particularly human services challenges and finance challenges, but you really need to find a way to escalate and to grow your economy. And you have a beautiful city. The tour that I took of the city with, with the Director of Economic Development is, is pretty amazing. And then when you, and for every employee of the city, and I've had this conversation with one of your members, if you have employees who do not love your city, I don't really care how competent they are. They don't need to be part of your city. Because if they don't love your city, then they don't see the opportunities, that they only see the downside of everything in your city, and they don't see the opportunities that you see, then I just can't imagine how well they're going to perform the work that's required to advance their community. So, I want to thank you all, we will be around, and we will always be available for any consultation that, that you all need. So, thank you.
All right. I saw Counselor Holloway's light, and then I have something to say.
I think you clarified the point that I was about to ask when you were listing all of those triggers. I, I was taking them as things that you were saying weren't in place, and I was a bit confused because one of the things that I, treasurer was in here about, for example, was telling us just recently, the things that she did put into place regarding some of the things that you listed, but you came back and clarified that those things are in place, we just want to make sure that we have them in place. So, you already gave that clarification, thank you.
Okay. First off, I know I can speak on behalf of city council when I say this. Thank you guys so much for the work that you've done. You've really taken, you know, a municipality that had suffered from ten years of just poor leadership, poor management, and you guys have really just given new birth to this city, where, you know, we're actually able to have a legitimate capital improvement program as opposed to, you know, just a few little ancillary items. You know, we're building up reserves now, we're, you know, on track and, you know, taking models of what other successful localities are doing, and we're implementing them here. We have a ton of work, yeah, that still needs to go, but if it was not for you guys, I, I don't know where the city would have been. I can only imagine of, you know, how bad rock bottom we could have hit. But with that being said, your report raises a lot of concerns that I have. You know, the big one being, you know, talking about the transition plan, that you guys don't have, you know, good feeling, good confidence that a lot of this work, you know, is, you know, going to, you know, continue. And, you know, I kind of have that, you know, similar feeling. I mean, when we have, let's see, I counted seven target dates missed just from the ERP process and the security and workforce modules on page seventeen and eighteen. They just keep getting pushed back further and further, it looks like. I mean, that gives me, you know, a, a lot of concern, a lot of concern in the IT department with this, a lot of concern with management, because I, in reading this, it doesn't look like it's being taken seriously. And, you know, when I have nine major areas of concern that are outlined- And, you know, when I have nine major areas of concern that are outlined, I thought that that's, you know, the reason why, you know, we were, you know, working hand in hand with you guys. I mean, to me, and that's almost an indictment, that, you know, the management is just, it's not, you know, being effective. So, you know, for me personally, you know, I'd like to see, you know, some, you know, quotes, you know, from you guys. You know, what a continued arrangement could look like. Check-in meetings, you know, what we could, you know, look like with additional project management services. I just, I really have a lot of concerns with these issues here that have yet to be resolved. Especially when, we know when the timeline has been that you guys are going to leave. We continue to push dates back. And like you said, you know, in previous meetings, if we don't take care of these issues now, we now prolong the ability to get a bond rating back another year. Which means future capital investment is going to get pushed back another year. So I'll save, you know, some other comments later, but I saw two lights. I think I saw Councilor Joyner and Councilor Denton, did you have your line on? Okay.
Yeah, I would like to echo Mayor Parton's comments about some quotes on services to, this little bug, the bug is.
Yeah, it was flying around me earlier, which is why I kept going like this and trying to gracefully do it without anyone seeing it.
But I would echo his comments in that I'm concerned that without some oversight, that we are going to miss a lot of these triggers and that we are going to regress. And that's the last thing we want to do. Particularly when we are still, we still don't have that 2020 audit yet. And there's so many other things to do. I mean, I'm very concerned about our 2025 audit with some of these, you know, if we don't make these deadlines by December, what is that going to do to our 2025 audit? So I would like to see some quotes for some services, some oversight services. But I wanted to also combine a thank you for all that you have done because you really, we were, we were on the precipice. And you saved us from falling off the cliff. And I want to say thank you for all y'all have done. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Denton?
Well, I had to smile when Mr. Bob said, "There has to be a lot of love in Hopewell." And yes, there is. I have a lot of love for this city. And I remember a year ago when you all came. And I think at that time, I was thinking, I can't speak for anybody else, but I was thinking, okay, here comes the army, they're going to come in here, get these CAPRAS, you know, the annual reports, that we're behind. And we're going to be in great shape. Well, I made a remark that night to Mr. Reagan. I don't know if he remembers that remark or not. I said, "It sounds kind of simple, but I don't know where the good starting point is going to be because we were so far behind that we had no good numbers to start with." And low and behold, as soon as you all got started, we had an avalanche. And we saw we had more than just the CAPRAS problem. We had a major problem finances throughout the whole city. So what we thought was going to be a simple fix, I did. I thought, we got the army here, we can get this done. Turned out to be much more complicated than I ever thought it would be. I am very thankful for you all. You've came in, you have helped us especially with industry. I cannot thank you enough because they are very, very important to our city. And we rely on them and have for many years. And I just hope the relationship between the city and industry will continue to grow. I hope we can solve our difficulties. And one of the things I did notice, you were talking about the amendment that was coming up, or we had not gotten yet, but we, don't we have a contract that expires on June the 30th of 2025?
We do. The amendment, we have gotten a copy of, so we negotiated that amendment. And it's just going through the red line process. What was concerning to me is that we had some silence there for a little while. So I was happy when we got the phone call back this week. What's going on now is the red line process back and forth, right? But let's say that Advanex is doing their job of moving it through the red line process within all the industry partners, and it comes over to the city for their red line, and there's no legal counsel, and that kind of thumps, right? And no one's following up on it. It could die there, right? So we just want to make sure that we're prompt and we're responsive and we're getting back and we're managing that process. Because if you look at, where are we, June, July, August, September, October, we're five, sorry, four months, starting in July, from when we had the original markup, that's already one cycle. You only have three more left before, as you said, you know, the agreement expires. So I know that seems like nine months, no big deal, just stay on top of it.
Okay, so that concerns me because I think they've been sort of agreeable during all this, but we're going to have some, I think, tough negotiations and coming up. And it's going to be very important for our city.
I think, and this is just Heather Ness opining, the things that they're looking at doing is just putting in some controls so that there's no surprises. So if that maintains, I'm hopeful that it will be an easy negotiation. But that being said, when those controls are put in place, the city also has to follow through on those pieces, or there's probably going to be some penalty to that. So just, you know, it's not enough to sign the agreement. It's also, it's just like I'm saying to you here, as we pull out of the field, here's your triggers, here are the things that have to be on your monitoring spreadsheet that, you know, as Bob correctly stated, should be in your financial committee meetings. Same thing's going on with the industry. So once that amendment is negotiated, you're going to have some controls and some repercussions. So just make sure that you're meeting those deadlines, that you're meeting those controls that are going to be negotiated. Because you can't have those slip. Same thing.
Well, unfortunately, I'm not going to be here to follow what's going to happen. But I will be watching, believe me. I will be watching. I know Mr. Bob knows that I'm only having an eye on the city. And because it is my city, so I'm, I take it personal. So I do again, thank you all for what you've done. And I did talk to one director off the record and said, "How do you feel about us moving forward when the Bob Group is gone?" And the response was, "I think we can do it. If we all pull together as a team and work together," and that includes council. "We've got to work together as a team. And we can do what you all have laid out for us to do. I just believe it right here." So thank you all. I do appreciate it.
All right, are there any other comments? Councilor Pelham, I know you're online. Okay, hearing none. In getting, you know, just hitting back home on some of the items, I think to ensure, you know, that we, you know, that the city manager and the team, you know, actually implements these, do I have a motion to direct the city manager to complete the reconciliation process by November 19th and present the results at the November Finance Committee as presented on page 16 of the Robert Bob Report? Excuse me, for the bank reconciliation manager implementation.
So, ma'am?
Okay, I'll second it. Councilor Holloway?
That's the question?
I'm trying to get clarification on something, but hold on. In your opinion.
May I speak to Mayor?
Yeah, right after Councilor Holloway.
All right, thank you.
It's to my understanding that the CFO has indicated that the treasurer is on track with reconciling the master account. They have completed July, they're, they are working on August. And I think that was an internal date of November 19th that the CFO believed that it could be completed by and presented to. So that is the date that I left with the Robert Bob Group as our internal date that we are shooting for.
Right, so.
Now, that's assuming that there's no hiccups or any issues. But that's what we believe we could possibly have everything reconciled by.
Now, this process, does it include the treasurer's office?
Yes, it does.
So how can we leave the responsibility on the city manager if we don't have control of the treasurer's office?
The CFO has been working closely with the treasurer's office. So far, they have been able to reconcile July with no problem.
Right, but I don't.
So we expect to continue, but I really can't answer it.
Right, so I don't, I don't see why we would put a vote in to make the city manager responsible over something that God forbid, but that the city treasurer's office also has responsibility over. Financial office, do you have explanation? I want to make sure that we're not targeting our responsibility solely on the city manager. That's a split duty between the treasurer's office that we won't have control over.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, excuse me, and members of council. So the treasurer's office and myself, Ms. Shannon, Ms. Naka, we have been working very close together to ensure that we're staying on track with the bank reconciliation manager. That is not only on the master account, it's on every single account that the city has. As of right now, July has been completed. Naka is completing August. It should be complete, I want to say Monday. Yesterday was the completion date. So we have an internal target when we have our weekly meetings to make this stuff happen. Next week, she'll be working on September, and then the city will be caught up for July, August, and September. The internal discussion we had was, I would love for Finance and the Treasurer's Department to come back at the November 19th Finance Committee to say that this has been completed. So that is our internal goal.
So for clarification, though, if there's something that the treasurer's office does not do, that eliminate anything that you all can do. It's nice to think that have.
Right, that's, that's true.
That's the thought, but I can't see us targeting the city manager with the responsibility.
Right.
If the treasurer says today or tomorrow, I'm not going to do it until, you know, a couple of weeks from now, whatever.
I believe Shannon's team wants to complete this. But I do understand what you're saying. Yes, sir, Dr. Manker has no oversight.
So I don't see why we would, as a city council.
That sounds good.
Solely on the city manager. That's my comment.
And I'll respectfully disagree because we do have a memorandum of understanding from the treasurer's office. And as we've seen in this report, we've already had, what, seven targeted missed dates with multiple delays. So, you know, a motion will still end up standing for a vote. Councilor Pelham?
Yes, sir. I would also like to say that thank you to the Rob Bob Group for all the work you've done and opportunity to sit in, to be a part of two of the sessions for SOPs that were, that were worked on with the departments as well as your group. And the young ladies that presented were pretty outstanding in galvanizing that to be on sync with the standards that we, they have to upkeep in the future. But with that, that was with the CPMT. I was wondering, in all the training that I went to, I forgot to ask, is there a special SOP for this special welfare account for the social services? And if not, can that be looked at to make sure that the monies that goes into that account are dispensed in an accurate way? In a...
So, Councilor Pelham, this is Christie. We actually do have a special welfare SOP, and the training is on Thursday.
Oh, what time is that?
I don't have my calendar in front of me, but we can get it back to you and let you know.
I can tell you right now.
Oh, yeah, I would like, I would like to.
Which one is it?
Special Welfare.
Special Welfare is at 3:00 PM in the Sally Port Conference Room.
It's at 3:00 PM in the new conference room that's right off the parking lot.
Okay, okay, I would like to be a part of that.
Okay.
As always, been a special account for me and a concern. And so I'll see you at 3:00 on Thursday then. Thank you so much.
Yep.
And again, thank you, you're the one who gave the training, correct?
Myself and Lais together, yes. The two of us did it together.
Yeah, you did a great job.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Okay, Councilor Holloway?
So, may I have a question to add on to that?
There's a question for you, so maybe there's an opportunity to add.
The memorandum of agreement I remembered that we made could expire again at any time. I just, right.
That's what we were just talking about.
So it can, it can, I still, council, I still come to say the same thing again. We are, I think if a motion is going to be put into place for the responsibility of the city manager, it should be only to the things that she would have the control of. Again, not the things that the treasurer's office had control of. I don't see how we would make a motion to do that. We want these things done, but again, I think the memorandum of agreement is limited in context to what you can supervise in that agreement, having the accountant, but not the whole reconciliation.
Also, I just wanted to say that there is a requested public hearing that was adopted by the consent agenda today that would give the possibility to have Dr. Manker oversee that process if council passes it.
That's fine.
I would say, just one more thing to add on that. Someone has to be accountable. Because if we just let it fly out there, we're going to end up right back where we are. So someone's got to have the ball. Someone's got to be on first. And, you know, I think what was just said is true. With the MOA, council has the ability to make some adjustments and push things through, so.
Now, that's, so that's what my statement would have been, she'd answered that. So if we put something in place to make it so that we have the authority to make, that she can have that authority, then that'd be one thing. But without us putting something in place first for her to have that authority, we can't singly ask her to be responsible with something she hasn't had authority over yet.
Correct, yeah, we have it on here for the charter change. But what I'm talking about is for the city's portion of everything that we've got to do here, this is the responsibility of, you know, Dr. Manker to implement and complete. If the treasurer doesn't do her part, then she doesn't do her part.
And then that will trigger your action.
Exactly, precisely.
So, you know, someone's got to have the ball to follow it through. So Dr. Manker can be responsible for the city's portion of it. And if treasurer doesn't do a portion of which we have no indication right now, by the way, then the, then city council can then trigger. But you've got to work your way down sort of the line.
But that's what I'm asking, that we make the responsibility specific to what she has the responsibility over, not name what she doesn't have responsibility over.
Okay, Council, Council Harris?
I'm just trying to get an understanding of the motion, and it's been a lot of dialogue. What is the motion?
So it is to complete the next steps that are marked on page 16. It said, "Complete reconciliations for the bank reconciliation manager implementation by Tuesday, November 19th, and present results at the November Finance Committee meeting." And it's for, and for context, it is for the city's portion.
For the city's portion?
Right.
Okay, so in reference to what Councilor Holloway was saying?
About the treasurer's portion?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, we don't. Yeah, I mean, we don't have, yeah, if we, you know, don't have influence over it, we don't have influence over it, but if it's not done, like Ms. Ness said, it's going to end up, you know, going to our triggers that we have in our policies and procedures.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Counsel Harris?
Hold on, so the motion?
Uh, the, uh, we're in the middle of roll call.
Go ahead.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
No.
Counsel Pelham?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
Okay.
You didn't call my name.
Oh, and Counsel Holloway?
Okay, and then my last thing is, um, do I have a motion to direct the city manager to implement a tracking system to track the progress of the transition plan as outlined by the Robert Bob Group?
So, boo.
She didn't call my name, and I did get the chance.
I know, but I still had the floor from the original motion. I hadn't, uh, relieved it yet. Motion's been made by Counsel Pelham and seconded by Counsel Joyner. Is there any discussion?
Put you, yeah.
To direct the city manager to implement a tracking system to pro, to, um, track progress of the transition plan as outlined by the Robert Bob Group. Okay?
I want to challenge the mayor, uh, with legal, please, because the motion was called, roll call was called, my name was skipped with the roll call. On the first motion.
Uh, Ms. Burton?
My, they, they were calling the, they were calling the roll call, my name was skipped, the mayor was aware of that, and my name never got called for the vote. What do we do in that case?
Do you just want to do a revote? Do a revote? Uh, do another, uh, revote, please.
Have the motion read, have the motion re-read.
Yeah. Have the motion re-read?
I don't, I don't have the, the language precisely to what that motion was, for the motion.
So the motion is to charge the city manager to complete the reconciliations for the bank manager, manager implement, reconciliation manager implementation by Tuesday, November nineteenth, and to present the results at the November Finance Committee meeting for the city's portion. Is it appropriate for discussion during the revote for this? Roll call, please. Excuse me, roll call, please.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
No.
Counsel Pelham?
Can you unmute Counsel Pelham?
We're asking her to unmute, she has to unmute herself.
Counsel Pelham? Counsel Pelham?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes five to one.
Okay, now going to the motion to direct the city manager to implement a tracking system to, to track the progress of the transition, uh, plan as presented by the Robert Bob Group.
Already make, I make some motion.
Right.
I'll second that.
Yeah, Counsel Pelham has made the motion, it's been seconded by Counsel Joyner, Counsel Holloway. The Robert Bob Group has recommended the city manager to create a tracking system to monitor the progress of the transition plan and all the outstanding items, and I'm asking for a motion for it.
The motion is on the floor, right?
Correct, yeah, we're going to roll call now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
Yes.
Counsel Pelham?
Yes.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, uh, moving on to, uh, communications from citizens. Uh, can you please read the statement? Madam Clerk? Yes.
Communication from citizen period limited in total time to thirty minutes is part of the order of business at each regular council meeting. All persons addressing council shall approach the microphone, give name, and if they reside in Hopewell, their board number and limit comments to three minutes. No one is permitted to speak on any item scheduled for consideration on regular agenda of the meeting. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Any questions must be asked through the presiding officer. Any person who makes personal, impertinent, abusive, or slanderous statements or incites disorderly conduct in council chambers may be barred by the mayor, done further audience before council, and removed from subject to appeal to a majority of council. See rules four oh five and four oh six.
Okay, uh, the only person that I have signed up for tonight is Latoya Jenkins.
Good evening. Um, yes, I do live in Hopewell, Wofford Hampton, and Glendale. Um, this is my first time, so I'm unfamiliar with what I need to do or say, just basically just tell you what my concern is. Okay, so, um, where my house is situated, where I bought the, my property, is at the bottom of a hill, so it's like on a bowl, right? So my, my property is like on the side of the bowl. And at the back of my property, there's a creek that goes where there's a pipe that goes on one side and on the other side. Of course, there's a street over this pipe. It's a, it's a, I don't know what side the pipe is, but it's, it's a pipe that goes to the other side of the street. What happens when it heavily rains? Debris from all the way upside the hill comes down, blocks the pipe, and water floods Matt backyard like it's a pool, not even a pool, like a small, like leak, and then it floods into my house. So I didn't know this, of course, when I bought the property. And so when I found out after I bought the property, I was being proactive, and I came down to the city and I spoke to the city. And the city said that it was within the budget to get this rectified. That was a few years ago. It didn't, I really didn't have much of an issue. Um, I went and bought sandbags because I like to be proactive. Um, and so in January, my house flooded. Um, I was at, away at work, it wasn't caught. Um, and my basement, I was up to my, past my ankle, in water. So me and my family members was trying to get the water out, but of course, by then it's too late. Um, and then just recently, um, in October first, it happened again, not my house, it didn't get, I'm flooded. Um, however, when I called the city and I asked the city, can they move the debris? Because they saying that it's the creek, and of course, the bowl, because a whole bunch of rain, and it has nowhere to go, it's going to start rising, right? So I asked them to move the debris. And so what I get is, oh, I looked on the other side of the street, and there's water coming out. And I'm like, well, it's not really coming out in regular force if there's a bunch of debris, it's only going to come out in a little bit. So no one moves the debris that comes down from way up top of the hill to come down in front of this pipe. So now, again, I have to leave work and scramble. So then after the water ends, I take a picture and I send it in and ask them to move the debris. And I do have a picture of that, of the debris that's in front of the pipe, what the pipe should look like, and what it looks like when there's debris in front of it. So I don't understand if I'm in the budget, or houses looks like that is in the budget, or what, I just get kind of bounced around. I was told to come here and present to you guys what the issues are.
What ward, do you know what ward you're in?
Um, I think I'm in six or seven, I think.
Okay.
I think it's mine, uh, unless we change the boundaries. But I spoke to Ms. Jenkins, and it was in the budget for the, uh, Public Works to do something or engineering. And if it's taken out, uh, we need, I need to know why, and why did they do that, uh, Dr. Manker? And so we need to just get the young lady's name and follow up and see if, to put it back, whatever we have to do to put it back, because it was there. I, I remember that issue when another person lived there, so. But I don't know, it might be Ward seven, but anyway, I know I was involved at that time, a couple of years back. So.
Well, I can, I can tell you, Counsel Pelham, it's, uh, it's almost serendipitous that this came up, uh, because at our next meeting agenda, uh, we're discussing the stormwater resiliency plan. So we'll be able to see, um, you know, if this project was, uh, in there or not in there. Um, but I do think that, you know, Public Works needs to go out there, especially if it's city infrastructure, um, you know, it needs to, you know, seriously look at, um, here, Mr. Harris, you know, going and clearing the pipe.
Well, when the water is so flooded, you can't see the pipe.
Correct. But if, if it's ill-blocked, though, you know, the water will stop, come up, and go over as the path of least resistance. So what I'm saying is, it might still be blocked underneath. But I, I think that Public Works needs to go out there and needs to come up with a, um, you know, a temporary. Yeah, a plan of some sort.
Well, I, when, the last time on October first, they said that, um, it's not in the budget, uh, there's nothing we can do, it's going across too much, and that was pretty much it, so this is why I'm here today.
Yeah, with clerk, yeah, we got your name, but, you know, will you just give her your contact information, like your cellphone and email? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that didn't sign up tonight? Okay, seeing none. Uh, moving on to regular business, R one, Dr. Manker?
Tonight, we have a budget, um, asking counsel for a budget, uh, resolution, approval. Staff recommends the FY twenty-five budget resolution amendment to apply year-end funds that adhere to financial policies and designate funds to the city capital reserves, unassigned funds, assigned funds, budget stabilization funds, and budget balance accounts. I've also provided you with the, uh, re, uh, review of the twenty-four year-end funds and budget requests. Um, the snapshot shows that Winston Churchill, well, we in, we had seven point, uh, seven million dollars Winston Churchill repairs was one point two, purchase of one one zero one Maplewood was one oh four two, CSA funds was one oh eight, the legal search farm was fifty-one, and then the Commonwealth attorney, that left a balance of five point five roughly. And we applied those to the fiscal financial policies, and there you see the capital reserve fund, um, is one point five, unassigned funds is one point three, uh, assigned funds is one point six, the budget stabilization, we added five hundred thousand there, and then the fund balance, we added five hundred thousand. So we distributed the monies that was left over. And so per, uh, Counsel Pelham's, uh, request, she wanted to know what those assigned funds were, and so I have a breakdown of those costs that are below. And so the breakdown of those funds are the marina cost repairs, the grant, the match for the generator, the data integrators, fund analysis and recovery, the munis ERP, and then the three positions that were recommended by the Robert Bob Group, which is the legal administrator assistant, ERP administrator two, and then economic development specialist. And that totaled up to the one point five. And I just also put a little note there that the assigned funds just generally mean that we earmarked those funds for, um, what the city plans to use that. And so behind there, you have the budget resolution that just outlined everything that I've indicated to you, um, in the resolution. If you have questions about the resolution, I'm happy to answer.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this, you know, you have to be cognizant of the fact that those positions that you alloc, for the positions that you allocate against this money, this is one-time money. So how are you going to program that for the out years? Against unknown revenue? I mean, this, I mean, for the future years, you all just need to be cognizant of that.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, you paying for it for one time, we initially hired the person for the half a year, but after that, you, you, it has to be revenue placed against it. Just a comment.
Yes, ma'am. All right, is there a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-five budget resolution amendment to apply? Okay, the end-of-year funds that adhere to a financial policies that designated funds to cities' capital reserves, unassigned funds, assigned funds, budget stabilization funds, and fund balance accounts as presented. Motion was made by Counsel Denton and seconded by Counsel Holloway. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, one other question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and this, 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 uh, presentation was that with input from the CFO as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, she's the one that provide the recommendation of the breakdowns for, um, the different stabilization fund, fund balances, etc.
All right, great, thank you.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counsel Denton?
Yes.
Counsel Pelham?
Yeah.
Counsel Holloway?
Yes.
Counsel Joyner?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, uh, moving on to R two.
The second item for counsel's consideration tonight is the adoption of the Personal Property Tax Relief. Uh, staff recommends adopting the Personal Property Tax Relief Act rate for the city of Hopewell, that stands from January twenty twenty-four to December twenty twenty-five. Uh, as counsel adopted, their, um, rates equal to sixteen. The P D T R A is, um, thirty-one percent relief.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the Personal Property Tax Relief Act rate, uh, for the city of Hopewell for January twenty twenty-four through December twenty twenty-five at thirty-one percent? Okay, motion's been made by Counsel Holloway and seconded by Counsel Harris. Is there any discussion? All right, uh, roll call, please.
Counsel Harris?
Yes.
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 All right, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right.